Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 11th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum. Everybody is present with no announcements this evening. We're going to move right to approval of tonight's agenda. I need a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. We have an agenda. We have two items on special recognition this evening. We'll start with item 2A, and that is the reading of our proclamation recognizing Muslim American Heritage Month. And I've asked Councilmember Payne to read the proclamation for the council, and then we'll invite forward some representatives.
Whereas freedom of religion holds the distinction as a cherished right and a foundational value upon which the laws and ethics of the United States are based. And whereas Muslims around the world and in the United States specifically constitute a racially and culturally diverse group that is bound together by a shared belief in diversity as strength and unity as power. And whereas Muslims make up more than 25% of the global population, and Islam is the world's fastest growing religion. And whereas the Muslim American community provides support and assistance to people throughout the community through charitable contributions, social activism, and community groups. And whereas while Muslims make substantial contributions to nearly every aspect of society, including academia, law, business, healthcare, military service, and more. And whereas Olympia is home to a vibrant Muslim community that plays an essential role in enriching the unique character of our city and state. And whereas the Islamic Center of Olympia welcomes more than 40 ethnicities to worship and community together, which includes immigrants and refugees. And whereas we acknowledge that the history and contributions of Muslim Americans in our country are often neglected or defaced by prejudice, discrimination, xenophobia, and Islamophobia. And whereas on this occasion, the city of Olympia recommits itself to standing against hate and injustice in all forms into combating anti-Muslim rhetoric through awareness, education, community, and meaningful action. And now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim July 2023 as Muslim American Heritage Month in the city of Olympia. And our community joins those of all faiths and backgrounds in celebrating our Muslim friends and neighbors and the cultural and religious heritage of the Muslim community. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 11th day of July, 2023, Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
Great, thank you. And now I'm going to sign the proclamation and invite forward some community representatives, including Dr. Amina Khazi. And I've got, I believe, a Washington State Senator Yasmin Trudeau and Mr. Simab. Are you going to speak for the group?
I'll say Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim. I'll start with the name of God, the most clarionous, the most merciful. Assalamualaikum, hello and shalom to all. First of all, I would like to say special thanks to our honorable mayor, our council member, especially Councilmember Dante for recognizing Muslim American Heritage Month in the city of Olympia. And that's the first time, and will be having more, Insha Allah. Washington State thrives on diversity, and Olympia is city for all. Islam is a religion of universalism, tolerance, peace, and reconciliation. Islam teaches that life is sacred and that believer has a duty to uphold truth and justice. Social justice is the core principle of Islam. Islam teaches us to respect everyone regardless of their faith, gender, color, creed, or social status. In United States of America, we have more than 4 million Muslims in the United States and around more than 100,000 Muslims in Washington State. And they're all serving in the key posts in the United States of America. In the past several decades, America has made a point of recognizing minority communities and their accomplishments and impact on society. Muslim American Heritage Month is a way to educate not only our community, but all Americans on our positive impacts in American society. We have almost 30 to 40 families who live in Olympia, and we have an Islamic Center in Olympia as well, which Councilmember Dante recently visited. We all know that Islamophobia is on rise. Anti-Muslim sentiments have spiked in recent years. And these sentiments impacted in the form of burning of our mosque, vandalism, hate crimes. Recently, a year or two year ago, our mosque in Tacoma was burned. So the only way forward for all of us, the community engagement and to work with each other, and in case of these crises, we are able to reach out to our officials to help us in that regard. Thank you very much, city of Olympia, again, for this recognition. I'm truly honored on behalf of my Muslim community and our friends. I would also like to recognize a few people who are here. Senator Trudeau, she's on her way, stuck in the traffic, but she'll be here shortly. We have Mr. Simab from the CARE Association. CARE is the largest Muslim association in the United States, which has its chapter everywhere. And we have Washington Chapter Director right here with me, who would speak a few words. We have our Executive Director Amber from Washington State. So, Washington, thank you so much for joining us. We have our community members, Pakistani community members from the, who are also active members of the mosque of Tacoma. I see lots of other friends here who have joined us, and some are on our way coming from Seattle, so probably might be a little late. Thank you, all of you have joined us tonight. I really appreciate that. And thank you, city of Olympia, and council members, our mayor. I see our chief is there too. Thank you very much. Now I would request Simab to say a few words.
Mr. Simab.
Greetings. Thank you, Dr. Amina Khazi, for my cookie. It says Muslim American Heritage Month on it. It's awesome.
You guys all got it?
Yes. Assalamualaikum wraknatullah barakatuh. My name is Simab Hussaini. I'm a Muslim American. I'm a Washingtonian. I'm a community organizer, and here on behalf of your chapter of the Council on American Islamic Relations in the state of Washington, and its Executive Director Imran Siddiqui. Last year, CARE Washington applauded the governor's proclamation making July Muslim American Heritage Month in this state. Today, we join the founding members of the Muslim community in this great city of Olympia, its organizers, and its mayor and council members in the city's proclamation of a Muslim American Heritage Month of its own. This amount of recognition at a city level is not only remarkable, but also an acknowledgement of the beauty that immigrants bring to a city. Not only limiting itself to a city even, but its state and a nation as a whole. It's a sign that this city truly cares about its people and that it works to engage and uplift all of those within it. We're also grateful for the Muslim communities and its leadership, Masjid Al-Nur, the surrounding community members in a beautiful city like this, like the endearing mosqueeers that protected us and stood up for us while we were being threatened and firebombed. And together have made this a caring and welcoming city for us all, which complements the values that Dr. Amina Khazi mentioned. Together over the years, we have lobbied and advocated for a better state through CARE's Muslim Day at the Capitol, and counted on us to be there for you when in need. So it is our honor to be here today and to celebrate this with you all. Thank you to our mayor, Cheryl Selby, and our council members, Senator Yasmin Trudeau, Dr. Amina Khazi, and our board and staff at Masjid Al-Nur for working cooperatively together and making this possible. Assalamualaikum wraknatullah barakatuh. Thank you.
Thank you, brother Simab. Senator Trudeau is still like five, seven minutes ago. I think the traffic coming from Seattle is pretty bad. I also would like to acknowledge one of the very, recognize an active member of our Olympia community, Brother Mustafa, who's here. Thank you for being here. He's a representation. He's been living here for a very long time, and he is one of the community pillars. Can we have a picture?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to correct. Yes, so, Doctor, I need to sub out one page of the proclamation because it had the wrong date on it. Okay. All right, so we're going to keep moving. I know we're waiting for Senator Trudeau to make it to chambers, and when she does, he'll give her a moment at the, at the mic as well. So we're going to move on to item 2B, which is another proclamation recognizing Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. And I've got Councilmember Juan, who's going to read this proclamation. And then again, we're going to invite forward some community members.
Whereas in 2008, the U.S. House of Representatives designated July as BB Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month to enhance public awareness of mental illness, especially within minority communities. And whereas BB Moore Campbell was an accomplished African-American author, journalist, advocate, co-founder of the National Alliance on Mental Health, often referred to as NAMI, Urban Los Angeles, a national spokesperson for mental health education and support for individuals with mental health and their families. And whereas the Mental Health America report ranks Washington 46th in adult mental health and 43rd in youth mental health, and identifies 1 in 4 adults in Washington as having a mental illness. And whereas mental health conditions do not discriminate based on race, color, disability, sexuality, or gender. However, the trauma of oppression, including experienced discrimination, mistreatment, denial of resources, and violence can contribute significantly to mental health conditions. And a person's culture and identity can make access to mental health treatment much more difficult. And whereas according to the American Psychiatric Association, lack of cultural understanding by healthcare providers may contribute to underdiagnosis and/or misdiagnosis of mental illness in racially and ethnically diverse populations. And whereas factors affecting access to treatment by members of minority groups may include lack of insurance or underinsurance, lack of diverse mental healthcare providers, the stigma of mental health, language barriers, and distrust of the healthcare system. And whereas the month of July is a time to amplify the National Alliance on Mental Health's message of you are not alone, and to focus on the healing of prioritizing mental health and acknowledging that it's okay to not be okay. And now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim the month of July, 2023, as BB Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Olympia, and encourages our community to actively create spaces where all people can prioritize their mental health, where support thrives and flows freely, and where healing can take root. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 11th day of July, 2023, Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Juan. At this time, I'd like to invite forward Eliana Stockwell-Ferber to receive the proclamation and make some remarks.
Hello, everybody. Hi. So I'm Eliana Stockwell-Ferber. I'm the Youth and Young Adult Program Manager for NAMI Thurston Mason. NAMI is a national organization. I know we just heard a little bit about that. It's all over the nation, but we have 18 affiliates in Washington State. And this is your local affiliate, NAMI Thurston Mason. We serve these two counties. So I'm just going to say a little bit. As we observe BB Moore Campbell Minority Mental Health Month, we remember BB Moore Campbell, who we heard just a little bit about, who co-founded NAMI Urban Los Angeles and became a national change agent whose groundbreaking work revolutionized the way that we approach mental health and mental health care in underserved communities. She recognized and understood the detrimental consequences of silence rooted in stigma, one of the reasons for the lack of mental health care and treatment within communities of color. At NAMI, we know the statistics that show minorities of all types are disproportionately affected by mental health conditions and are less likely to receive the timely, humane, effective healthcare that they need because mental healthcare is healthcare, right? NAMI's statement on racism emphasizes that the effect of discrimination, including racial trauma, on mental health is absolutely real and serious. While anyone can experience the challenges of mental illness regardless of their background, facing discrimination can significantly worsen symptoms. Additionally, background and identity can make access to mental health treatment much more difficult for a variety of reasons. Racism and discrimination of minorities is a public health crisis everywhere, including here. And we stand with all the families, friends, and communities who have experienced trauma. Our vision here for NAMI Thurston Mason is that we envision a community where all persons affected by mental illness, including substance abuse, receive timely services that they need and that they deserve, empowering them and everyone in our community, because we are all connected, to enjoy a healthy and meaningful life. So thank you for this and honored to be here today.
Thank you so much. Any comments from up here? We're good? All right. Sure. Mayor Portem Gilman.
I appreciate us pausing to recognize this issue. And I, I hope that this month is also an opportunity to consider that there's multiple ways to intervene when a person is in mental health crisis. And that too often, the way that we try to intervene as a city to gain compliance ends with really negative consequences for the person who's in crisis. So I just, I know we're working a long game about reimagining public safety, but I just, in my heart, it's a crisis that would be really nice to figure out an immediate sort of different approach that could make sure that nobody in mental health crisis dies in the hands of our first responders during the time that we're developing our new solutions.
Thank you. I would just like to add on to that, that statement or that sentiment that we are, as a city, working very hard to draft those alternative responses, including our Crisis Response Unit and our Home Response Teams that are all trained up to, you know, make these situations, de-escalate these situations as best they can and get these folks the care that they need. So I just wanted to add that too. Okay, sure. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Both of these declarations today strike me as important with what's happened in the last couple of weeks in our High Court. You know, we have a court that's attacking the unalienable rights of human beings. And these stand up for how important it is for our community to come together and know each other, know what each other are about and where we're coming from, and know what each other are going through. And I think it's actually quite beautiful that they're both on the same night coming off of such, some horrible decisions by our High Court that hopefully the members of Congress and the president will find a way to undo, just like Abraham Lincoln did with Dred Scott.
All right. So at this time, we're going to, oh, sorry, Councilmember Payne.
Yes, I actually just wanted to take a moment, first of all, to thank Eliana for coming out and speaking to the proclamation because racial trauma is not something that people think about when it comes to seeking mental health support. And it is a huge factor for people of color. Not only from our various cultural backgrounds, but also just because of, we don't even realize what we have on our shoulders subconsciously that sometimes comes out in these experiences for us. So thank you and all the gratitude to you for coming to speak today. Also, I know you have a beautiful singing voice. I've heard you sing at TBH. And I really just wanted to take the time to thank Dr. Amina Khazi for your leadership. And I hope the Islamic Center of Olympia recognizes the leader that they've gained here in this community. I know you've recently joined us, and you've really just sort of have made it a point to build a stronger relationship with the city. So all the gratitude to you for doing that. It was wonderful to meet so many of you. Thank you all for coming from so many different places and so far just to be here tonight for a proclamation that's pretty routine for us to do, but it just goes to show why it's so important for us to do these recognitions because it is a big deal to communities who feel like they've never been seen before. And so congratulations on being recognized for Muslim American Heritage Month. And I look forward to declaring it again and again in the future.
And last I have Councilmember Partially.
It's always hard to follow Councilmember Payne. I just want to express the two proclamations bring joy to my heart that we're finally doing the proclamation for Muslim Heritage Month. And we're proclaiming, you know, that we support our diversity, that it is, enriches our community in ways that we can't even count. The other part of me is a little bit sad, and I will relate, that I have a nephew who has mental illness. And when I hear about these proclamations and mental awareness, and I see where we rank as a state, it makes me very sad. Because when my nephew was diagnosed with mental illness, my sister-in-law looked me in the eye and said she wished he'd been diagnosed with cancer because she lost all of her friends. They did not want to be near her. And that is somebody who is white. Now put someone who is color, their skin, their sexual preference, their transition to a different gender into that mix, and you put all that trauma on top of what the mental illness brings for trauma to that family and to that person, and the ostracization that we put on to the whole community around this person. So a proclamation like this brings a lot home to me, and I'm fumbling, but it's emotional. And I appreciate it and yet appreciate the joy to go with it. So thank you also, Councilmember Cooper, for highlighting how important these are to go together.
And we've just been joined by Senator Trudeau, who would like to have, make some remarks if possible. Perfect timing.
Thank you. And apologies for being late. I had to drive down from Tacoma. But really happy to be here with all of you and sending my well wishes for my children, who are part of the reason why I'm late because they don't like when mommy leaves in the evening to go do things. But it was really important for me to have that conversation with them. Well, one is four and one is 12 months, so one a little bit catching on to things a little easier than others. But to have the conversation about why this is so important. Why is mommy leaving in the evening after working all day to come and be a part of this? And, you know, as the first person that I'm aware of to serve in the legislature as a Muslim American, this is really deep and personal. And as someone who grew up, I call myself an I-5 corridor baby, but I grew up between Olympia, Lacey, and Tacoma. And so in many ways, being able to come home and see this recognition is so incredibly powerful. So I want to thank you. And also, you know, a resolution that I brought during session recognizing the importance of the holy month of Ramadan and how much that impacted Muslims from around the state and around the country, frankly. They were able to see representation and meaning and value of their faith in spaces like government, which is a very lonely place to be and has been for many years for Muslim Americans. And so I just, I want to thank everyone. I want to acknowledge the brilliance, the value, the resilience, the capacity, the dedication, and the acts of service that the Muslim community continues to show up and bring in every space that we enter. And I just, I couldn't appreciate being here more. So I don't know if I'm not anybody else had something that they'd like for me to say, but I just come here with gratitude.
Well, we, we receive you with gratitude as well, Senator, especially trying to make that commute during this time of the day.
It was a little challenging.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. But I'm here. I made it.
So it's especially honoring, you know, that you are doing this. And we are at the end of our part of the agenda where we're talking about our special recognition items. But is there anything else that, we've kind of already made all of our comments, so.
Just thank you.
Just thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Sure.
What, as you go north, stop in every city and drop off the resolution, okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I really, I hope to advocate this widely and largely and just show everybody the importance of the community and collaboration with government. So I look forward to sharing it everywhere I can.
I got, I got more people talking. Here we go.
This is a question. This is a request for Matt, a mayor who presides over our meetings, and we respect as such. During the time, it hasn't just been Senator Trudeau that's come in, but also more community members. And after talking about what a big deal this is, could you humor me and maybe taking the photo again?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Let's do one more photo really quick, okay?
Everyone in the audience.
One comment that we have, first Friday of every month, we have open house in the mosque. So please, I would request all our council members, our mayor, to join, and definitely will be taking Senator Trudeau as well. I'm so thankful for you to joining us. And we also have a representation from Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland's office. I think Peter is here. Oh, he's right there. The director of the Congresswoman's office is here. I think we also have somebody from the Lieutenant Governor's Office. I am trying to think where he is. So we have quite a representation here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you see my dead ghost room? Okay, we are going to get back on track with our agenda this time. This is the time of the evening where we open up a public comment. People from the community can spend two minutes addressing council and items that are either related to the agenda or just related to city, the city in general. So, I only have two people signed up in person and nobody remotely for this evening. So, I'm just going to be starting with the two here in chambers, and we'll move on after that. So, the countdown clock's over my right shoulder. I'd like to call forward at this time Dakota D., followed by John Paget.
Hello, council. My name is Dakota Joseph Donnelly. I'm here today because I figured out a solution to a problem. I have spent the last 12 years studying homelessness, the root cause of it, the root causes of it, mental illness, drug addiction. 12 years, that is a lot of experience. Not only did I experience it, but I took the time to learn about these people. I learned, I took the time to learn about the mindset. And I understand it. What my solution is to this problem, I have solved. And I can say with 98% certainty that I can end homelessness with my, with my solution. Not only have I built a basic income program, but I can have the first location up and operational within the U.S. by the end of this year. Not just in Olympia, but across the USA. When was the last time somebody could say that? When was the last time somebody had the balls to stand up for it? When was the last time somebody had a realistic solution that operates within our laws? We have heard that there are solutions for this time and time again. But I can say that my solution, I've already implemented.
Thank you. Thank you. We have run out of time.
Peace be with you.
And you as well. Next, we have John Paget.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My comment is about the Franklin Street project, which I learned from the June 23 Olympian article, reporting that the city council had approved a purchase and sale agreement of 303 Franklin Street. And the article reported that, as part of that, the city is mandating a certain amount of units in that building to be for affordable housing, but didn't go further into what the design of the building was. It did report that the city was excited to be working with TWG of Indianapolis. So, in an attempt to try to understand more what the design plans are for the building, I researched TWG. Now, there is not a single example of an urban-friendly building on their website, in their promotional video, on their portfolio, in their Instagram feed. Essentially, what you learn by researching TWG is that they produce suburban-style office buildings, like you would plunk in the suburbs, surrounded by a parking lot, for, you know, senior housing or low-income housing. They don't demonstrate any core competency in building good urbanism. So, which is, you know, would have ground floor, along the sidewalks, commercial storefronts, retail opportunities. I further researched this with an urban researcher in TWG, who lives in Indianapolis, who confirmed this about TWG. So, my question is, is the design set? What is it? Will we have public input? And can we, can the city require that it have the same type of fine-grained urban fabric that is on some of our favorite blocks in downtown, like Fifth Avenue between Washington and Franklin? It's really a quality of life people, for the people living in that building and everywhere downtown. And it is a safety issue, because without eyes on the street, that that kind of sidewalk activity brings, that block will become less safe and secure for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment this evening. So, are there any questions for staff or comments from the dais? Councilmember Wayne?
Yeah, I'd love if staff in the room could address that last public comment, or at least follow up with a, with a meet to address that comment.
While, while someone's coming up to address it, I want to probably tee it up, because I believe we're probably going to talk about our design review board and all the other overlays of design code and eds that we have, that developers have to incorporate into their designs. And, you know, especially when they're downtown, we have definitely very stringent reviews of their interface with the sidewalk and all that, so.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. For the record, Rich Hoy, Assistant City Manager. And I'm happy to follow up with Mr. Paget to explain more about the research we've done into the work that TWG has done in other communities in building affordable housing. They have a very clear track record for that. And just as you were mentioning, Madam Mayor, they will have to meet all of our land use and design requirements for building in our downtown, to build a good urbanism standards, the supporting vibrancy in our downtown walkability, et cetera. So, we're happy to follow up. There are ways yet from getting into detailed design, and there'll be much more process and design work to come. But we're happy to follow up with Mr. Paget.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I've got, okay, Councilmember Payne?
No questions. I just wanted to thank John for coming tonight and expressing your concern about, about that area. So, I hear you, and, and we will be sure to consult with the city manager and staff on, on what our plans will be for the future site. So, thank you.
Stay involved. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I think if I heard the first speaker right, he said that basic income was the key to solving homelessness, then I just want to say, I agree.
I heard your ears, you know, prick up when you said that. Okay, I think we're going to move on now to our consent calendar adoption. I need a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
All right. This is the time where I ask for questions, comments, or polls, but I've already got some polls. And then if there's more, we can add to the list. But at this point, I've got items 4J and 4K, both related to, I'm sorry, they're, they're not related to each other. So, the first one, 4J, is a resolution authorizing a regional agreement of the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance region, participating local governments for the purpose of establishing an opioid abatement council. Lots of words. We're going to hear about what that means in a minute. And then, the 4K is a resolution authorizing interlocal agreement with Thurston County, Lacey, and Tumwater for an opioid abatement council independent subcommittee. So, there is a nexus there with the opioid abatement dollars that came through to our state. Those are two. And then I have item 4G, which is the resolution relating to appointment of commissioners proposed by myself to serve on the independent salary commission. So, we'll start with items 4J and 4K. And, I'm not sure who's speaking to that. Oh, our, our city attorney, Mark Barber.
Good evening, council. For the record, my name's Mark Barber, city attorney. I'm speaking to this because it's probably a very boring subject. We essentially have two agreements before you. One's a broader regional agreement of the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance region. The One Washington Memorandum of Understanding, which we entered into last year as part of the initial opioid settlement with five opioid distributors, through the Attorney General's efforts as well as our own, created nine regions throughout Washington State. Thurston County happens to be in the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance region. I did not think up that name. There are seven counties within that region. Basically, what it comes down to is that all of us had to get together in that particular region and agree on an interlocal agreement as to how the funds would be used and how they would be tracked for transparency purposes for approved uses pursuant to the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding. Now, I warned you, this was going to be boring. But that's essential, because we had to complete that agreement. And that's what's before you tonight. The second agreement, which dovetails with it, is the interlocal agreement with Thurston County, Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater, to create an opioid abatement council, but an independent subcommittee of the regional agreement within the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance region. What this means is that Thurston County and the three cities within it, who are all participating local governments in the settlement, have created an independent subcommittee, so that they retain the ability to perform administrative duties that are required for transparency purposes, public records, and also, and most importantly, autonomy. I know that some of you have had questions about, you know, will these funds be pooled? The answer is no. We have received funds as part of the settlement for opioid abatement. We're going to be receiving more. But basically, what it comes down to is that we have responsibilities under our settlement agreement. And one of those responsibilities is we have to use the funds for the purpose of abating opioid use, and to ameliorate the effects of, you know, opioid epidemic that has occurred in Olympia. But we have the ability to do that as council believes is the best path to take. But we do have to report that. And to do that, that's part of what the independent subcommittee does, is it creates a mechanism for reporting this information, so that it's known how that is done and how the funds are used. So, in order to do this, and to receive and continue receiving funds for approximately the next 15 or 17 years, depending on which settlement agreement we're talking about, because now there's two where we're going to be receiving funds, we have to enter into these agreements. So, that's why they're before you tonight. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them as succinctly as I can.
I've got one from our city manager.
Just, just an add-on to that. Although this agreement gives us autonomy for the funds that Olympia specifically will receive, it doesn't prohibit us from working collaboratively with the other cities and the county, if that's what we choose to do. So, I just wanted to add that for context.
Yes. And I've got more questions down the dais. I've got Councilmember Partially.
And my, my simple question is, and perhaps you kind of insinuated the answer, is each of the jurisdictions going to receive a portion of the settlement that was predetermined in the settlement? Is that correct?
That's correct. Because Olympia got in early and was not only a participating local government, but a litigating local government, we actually receive a larger portion of settlement funds than the other two cities in this jurisdiction. So, that's the good news. Unfortunately, we don't receive the funds all at once. And I mentioned before that depending on which settlement we're talking about, it's going to be many years that Olympia will be receiving funds. And actually, I had done the calculation of the settlement amount early on when we had the first settlement. And my numbers turned out to be fairly accurate based on the contractual agreement and our percentage, because it is a fraction. But we would be receiving approximately $117,000 per year. And that was in the first settlement. And we'll be receiving a similar amount, but not exactly the same, for the second settlement with other opioid distributors.
And just a clarifying question, then. The subcommittee between the jurisdictions in Thurston County would be to provide the potential for collaboration with that additional money, as well as allowing us to potentially do our own projects?
Correct. There's no prohibition against working together in the, with the subcommittee. But there is a mechanism that's provided for, you know, the administrative portion, which is the duties and responsibilities to report publicly, so that people know that the funds that were received in settlement are being used in accordance with the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding to abate the opioid epidemic. That is the key of all of these agreements, is to make sure that the funds are used for that purpose.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Sylvie. Mark, I just had one question. Would, would this agreement, for the subcommittee, for our regional group, allow us to use an existing body to do that work? So, one of, one of my concerns is creating another interjurisdictional for, for kind of a small amount of money, and spending a whole bunch of time figuring it out, and wondering if, like, Medic One, or the RHC, or another, or the opioid task force even, could just have the right membership added to it, so we aren't recreating the wheel with this agreement?
Because of how the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding was structured, we really have to create this independent subcommittee. But what it comes down to is that council will have the ability to decide how these funds should be used, so long as they're used within the approved parameters. And the parameters are fairly broad. And those are set out in the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding. And essentially, you know, think of things like the ability to purchase Narcan and, you know, medications that are necessary to save lives, that relate to the opioid epidemic. And you're right, there's other uses that it could be put to, that could help ameliorate those sorts of effects. So, what I like about the potential for these agreements is that it allows for local local control and decision-making. And this council has the ability to do that and to set those policies and goals.
Would it be too late to amend this agreement to say that this new body has to follow the plan that's created by the Thurston County Opioid Task Force?
In a word, yes. It would be too late. In fact, we are already approximately 11 days past when we were supposed to have these agreements executed. They were supposed to be done by June 30, but for a variety of reasons, as you know, with many local governments involved. I believe that Olympia and Tumwater, I believe, is addressing the issue tonight as well with their council, and we're the last ones to take this step.
Okay. Yeah, I think, given that, we can ask the body that forms to do that and make it simple. Keep it K-I-S-S, right?
Absolutely. Even if it's like a subcommittee of a committee.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, sure.
Just to follow up, Councilmember Cooper's, who's staffing this subcommittee? Because that would be great instruction to them, to make sure that they're checking in with the opioid task force and trying to line those two up.
At this point in time, the agreement is before you, but there hasn't been those decisions made on staffing for the independent subcommittee. That will be the next step that will come. If the agreement's approved by Thurston County, okay, which has already done so, as I understand it, and then Lacey, Tumwater, and of course Olympia, if you approve it.
Excellent. I think you got the direction that we are hoping to go with this. And one last question. When, have we already started to receive the funds?
Yes. On good faith, they had paid Olympia the first two years' installments on the initial opioid settlement with the major distributors. We haven't received the funds yet with the second round of national settlement with those opioid distributors, but that's supposed to be coming. The question in my mind, and I should state this, is that I mentioned we were a little late getting this before the respective legislative bodies that need to enter into this interlocal agreement, and so our payment might be delayed for a short time. But I don't anticipate anything lengthy or long. If council approves these agreements, then tomorrow morning, the first thing that I'll be doing is sending them to our attorneys that we have executed the necessary agreements.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Good, good. All right. Thank you, Mark, for that, as always, clear explanation of a complicated topic. Thank you. Next on the poll was item 4G, and that's a resolution relating to the appointment of commissioners proposed by the mayor to serve on an independent salary commission to review city council compensation. So, just for some context for those listening, back in 2017, we passed an ordinance as a council to establish a independent salary commission that reviews and establishes the salaries for all of us up here. Members are appointed to the independent salary commission for two-year terms, and they don't receive compensation. We compensate all of our other advisory committee members. They have a stipend, but this, in statute, we cannot compensate the salary commission. It feels seen as a conflict. So, back in 2017, I ceded the first five city residents on that commission, and this is bringing forward the fourth commission selection. And each time, I have been very, very meticulous in how I approach ceding this commission. I want, I know it needs to be independent as in the RCW, so it can't be politicized. It can't be something that we just pick our buddies, so we get what we want. We need to have, I believe, diversity and a range of viewpoints, because that's our community. And so, each year, I've kind of gone out with the, or every other year, I've gone out with the idea that I look for representation from different parts of town, from different segments of our employment sectors, and a former council member, because we need to have somebody that's sat up here before, that understands the work that goes into this job. And we do it for love, but, you know, we have been able to, over, since we've ceded the salary commission in 17, we have increased our pay dramatically. And I feel that that's fair, but it's fair because it's independently decided. We can't change it. We can't interact with it. Once I bring these names forward and council approves them, it's like a firewall goes up between us and that process. We're not to communicate. We just get a report out at the end. So, this year, we're a little behind on schedule, and, but we're still going to make it in time, because they have to make a decision by October 1st for our budget. So, it's going to be fine. It's going to be fine. But the people that I am choosing are Dylan Carlson, who is an Eastside resident who has been very involved in labor contracts and now works for the city of Tacoma, so he is a public employee up there. Former councilmember Janine Rowe, who's representing, being a former councilmember. I've got Kelsey Hulse, who is a Westside resident and used to be our local government liaison with PSE. And then I have Quint Newell, who is a commercial real estate broker, who is a Westside resident, and his business is on the Westside, and representing the private sector. And then I have Leela Cross, who is well-known to many of you as a downtown business owner. She's owned many, many very popular restaurants over the years. She's very engaged in downtown, although she lives on the Eastside. But, so those are the five people I chose, and I feel like they do represent diversity in our community, not just as far as life experiences, but demographics, and, you know, all the things that we're looking for as we, you know, look at our equity lens. We look at everything with our equity lens in every process. So, I feel like I have done that, and I didn't know if there was any questions for me. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mary Selby. I appreciate your work. And just one question around, as, because I think, one question, one thing you said was there was a firewall between us once the commission is established. And I've heard that there are actually commissions who do ask their council for input?
They can come our direction. We can't go their direction.
And so, I just would like to give them that request, is that they do ask us for input and put a few questions in front of us as part of this process, if they're able to see that as part of their process. So, that's all I wanted to bring up.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's great. Input. And our human resource director, Linnea Jablonsky, is the staff liaison to the salary commission. Also, just for people to understand, since this is the fourth two-year term, that former councilmember Bateman, Jessica Bateman, was on for the last two years and was chair, and really worked super hard to get the process really streamlined, so that it's not as onerous for people to serve, because they are not getting compensated. So, all right. So, with that, I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent calendar. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much. We are going on to a public hearing now, item 5A. And this is a public hearing on a street vacation petition for the alley off Fourth Avenue between Adams Street and Franklin Street, and more commonly known as the old Griswold Building. And we have been working for over 10 years to try and unstick that property, and I think we're there. So, this is related to the development of the former Griswolds property, and it's my pleasure to invite forward Chris Horton, who is a city surveyor in our Public Works and Engineering Department. Welcome.
As you said, I'm Christina Horton. I'm the city surveyor, and I'm here this evening to present information related to a petition to vacate a portion of an alley lying north of Fourth Avenue between Adams Street and Franklin Street. Here is a vicinity map showing the approximate location of the area petitioned for vacation. It's outlined in red. The proposed area to be vacated outlined here is approximately 10 feet wide by 120 feet long, and this request is associated with a development application. So, this is the proposed site plan for the mixed-use development with affordable housing that will use the portion of vacated alley for lobby and open airspace with gated access. The alley vacation makes this low-income housing project more feasible. The applicant is working with private utilities, and there are no issues with city utilities. Part of preparing for the public hearing is notifying property owners, nearby property owners. The code requires that we reach out to 300-foot radius as a minimum. With this one, we reached out to 500-foot radius of mailings to property owners nearby. In addition to the mailing and notice in the Olympian newspaper published on two preceding Sundays, the site was posted. I have received three emails concerning this public notice. All three indicate concerns with this petition to vacate, and I have forwarded those emails to mayor and council members. So, staff recommendation is that pending public hearing comments, the council approves the petition to vacate and directs staff to prepare a vacation ordinance, and requires payment to the city of one-half the appraised value of $84,000, which would be $42,000 to the city. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Christina, Councilmember Cooper, followed by Mayor Potem Gilman?
Thank you, Mary Selby. Christina, can you just restate the way the alley will be used? Because I heard it like it would be the front entrance, and people would ingress and egress from the north alley into the building. Is that correct?
Right. So, my understanding is that this, here's Fourth Avenue, and this is the portion of alley being vacated or being requested. So, this is, this yellow portion would be lobby, so there would be an entrance here, and then this is just open airspace for residents, and I believe it'll be gated on both ends.
Thank you. Because when I looked at it, I assumed that they would be coming in from the north alley, so that makes a little more sense. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Potem Gilman, followed by Councilmember Parshley.
Great. Christina, I'm wondering about the $42,000. Is that because the assessed value is for the entire length of the block, or is that some standard formula to discount by half the value of an alley?
Yes. So, the petitioner was required to supply an appraisal of the portion of alleyway that they're asking to vacate, and that came in $84,000. So, half of that is the $42,000, which is what we typically ask for, is half of the appraised value.
Thank you.
Sure. And Councilmember Parshley?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. That was going to be my question. But could I get staff to remind the public that the number of units that is expected for the, is it roughly 60, at 60% AMI, if I'm correct? Did I get that right? I think that should be clear, that this building is going to be providing a workforce housing, and this vacation is going to allow for that, and that we've been working on this for a very long time.
Yes. My understanding is that 60% of it is low-income for 12 years. There's going to be 36 studio units and 12 one-bedroom units, and of course, commercial on the ground floor.
Thank you. My numbers were off. I remembered the 60, which is 60%.
You remembered the 60.
All right.
Any other questions?
Without any further ado, then, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. There was nobody that signed up online or in person this evening, so I'll open the public hearing. But I will also ask if there's anybody in the audience. For public hearings, I do allow folks that come in and get inspired to make comments, that they're allowed. So, I'm going to open the public hearing on a street vacation petition for the alley off Fourth Avenue between Adams Street and Franklin Street. Is there anybody that would like to make public comments for this hearing, for the record? Is there anybody? All right. Oh, do you want to come up? And you have three minutes.
Yes, here.
Yep, up to the podium. The mic is hot, and we've got the timer set at three minutes.
Okay. My name's Peter Connolly, and I'm a resident of Olympia, Washington. And I've never been to one of these things before, so if I do anything incorrectly, just let me know. But I'm just here to voice my opposition to this planned project. I am a musician who lives in Olympia, Washington, and the dumpster values in Opings Skate Shop building that is right next door is the only remaining downtown rehearsal space for local musicians, and it will not, we would never be able to get away with doing it if there was residential housing right next door. I also don't see how, when this is going to stop, where Urban Olympia just puts another eyesore into downtown that we don't need. And it's just succeeding so far and destroying a lot of the culture that is the reason why people move to Olympia. And if there's, and also provides livelihood for the majority of the downtown businesses that are open after 6:00 PM. I just think it would be devastating for all of those involved, and even if I didn't rent a space next door, I would be here saying the same thing. So, I mean, I understand that I'm not a high-income person. I could be very well fighting a war that we can't win. But seeing the company's website that tall talks about community and culture is just unbelievably upsetting, and also, objectively speaking, a lie. So, that is the reason why I came here. And I yield to the next person.
All right. Thank you for offering those comments to us this evening. Anyone else in the audience would like to make comments during this public hearing? Anyone else? All right. We'll close the public hearing, and I forgot to ask Christina, it should be in the report, how much longer we're leaving open public comment for the record. Do we know? I can't see it.
The action in front of you is to take action this evening, if you have no concerns. That's option one on your staff report.
Excellent. Okay. So, the action, when do we take action, then?
This evening. So, your option one on your staff report is to hold the public hearing, and then after close of testimony, if there are no concerns, approve the petition to vacate and direct staff to prepare the vacation ordinance, which will then return to council in the future for your approval.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I did find my motion sheet. I was just curious, because normally, we have additional time. So, we don't this evening. We do need to entertain a motion at this point. So, who would be offering a motion tonight? So, I've got Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mary Selby. I just wanted to see if our Director of Housing could come forward and say a little bit more about what we have negotiated with the developer in this development, because I think it's relevant, given the testimony.
As far as affordability?
Yes.
Thank you. We've got Darian Lightfoot on call here to talk a little bit more about this specific project.
Hello. My name's Darian Lightfoot, Director of Housing and Home Response. This project is approximately 50 units, and we'll be receiving the 12-year multifamily tax exemption, and that's typically requiring a percentage of the units to remain at that 115% AMI. But we have negotiated with the developer to really deepen that affordability, which is desperately needed in units in our downtown. So, having 60% of the units at 60 to 80% AMI for the full life of the exemption is really unique, and we were excited to be able to have those studio and one-bedroom apartments in the downtown. So, adding 50 units with half of them having affordable units is a really big win for our housing needs.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne?
Yes. Thank you, Darian. I was wondering if we could, before we entertain a motion, if we could discuss the concern that was raised by Mr. Connolly about the loud music in residential space. So, I see that as a valid thing to bring up, and so I feel like we should be talking about that.
Okay. I've got Councilmember Quinn, and then our city manager can talk about our noise ordinances in downtown.
Yeah, I just wanted to address Peter. I'm so happy you came, and I hope that you'll come again, and hopefully, you can see that you've evoked some thoughts up here and some comments, no matter how the decision goes tonight. So, spot on, Councilmember Payne, I was thinking just that, too. I don't want to, while more housing is absolutely a top, top priority for our city, and of course, our city government, but also, I don't want to dismiss- course, our city government, but also I don't want to dismiss how important the arts, cultures, and heritages are to our city, and not having rehearsal space, though it might sound small to some, certainly not to you, Peter, and myself, that is also a concern that we've been hearing time and time again as we've been furthering the Armory Project. I wonder if you've heard about the Armory Project and the creative campus over there and the former Armory? And we look about all of the different uses it could have for the arts, and certainly music, rehearsal space, whether it's just you by yourself, a band, or the local, a local organization like the Symphony Orchestra. So it is something that we are actively looking into.
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Payne. Yes, so when we were looking at re-envisioning the uses of the Armory, one of the main, main needs is rehearsal space, and so, and making it affordable. And so that is a priority for this council, for this city with the opening of the Armory. So stay tuned. And our city manager, Jay Bernie.
Actually, I was going to cover the Armory space and then also make mention of the cultural access program and the funds that are also available to help a lot of our community members that need space and can need to find, help find an affordable spaces. So that's another opportunity, and I'd be happy to connect with you, hand you my card so we could talk more about that, those opportunities as well.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, so I've got Councilmember Cooper, and then I've got Councilmember Parshley again, and then Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Darian for filling us in, Mayor, because I think that the reason we negotiated what we did is so that Olympians could live downtown. And so I feel, I feel like that affordability in that project is really excellent.
Yeah, it's definitely unique in the Walker John projects. We can't take questions from the audience at this point, I'm sorry. So I have Councilmember Parshley, and then Councilmember Madron brought up, we didn't really address the noise ordinances. So Councilmember Parshley.
Okay. One, Peter, thank you. I also hear you. When is that, not study session, but we're going to be talking about the Armory?
Next week.
Next week.
Stay tuned.
So come and listen, because we're going to have a rundown on what the design, initial plan is going to be for the Armory. So come listen, because that will be the first look for the public. And second, isn't the negotiation with Walker John longer than 12 years? I thought it was 20.
I don't think on this one, no. I'm getting a head shake from our housing program manager. Okay, so now we're going to talk to our city attorney again about noise ordinances.
Not noise yet, but the city manager has noise. I have before me the real estate purchase and sale agreement. This was a very unique agreement to be able to work with a private developer. It's the first one that Olympia has done. Usually it's been with nonprofits, usually, but this was our first with a for-profit developer. But we had to meet constitutional requirements to do so, and the state auditor has concluded that we did so. As part of it, we provided that basically during a certain period of time, and this is where we're coming back to the first 12 years, that people that would be able to use these units in the property, they'd have to be at 80% AMI or less, as reported by HUD. And basically, that would continue on, and then a certain segment of the housing would be provided to households whose monthly housing costs, including utilities, other than telephone, do not exceed 30% of the person or household's monthly income. So this is really people who are very low-income. This would continue upon the property for a period of time, 12 years, and that's where the confusion comes up, except that that's not enough, and we negotiated for more. It would not have passed, I think, constitutional muster if it had only been 12 years. So we further agreed that the remaining units in the property could go at market rate. However, after 12 years, then it had to be, you know, stepped down, and we agreed that the affordable units could be reduced by about 50% for the next three years of a 20-year restrictive covenant, and that 30% of the total housing units upon the property would serve low-income persons with incomes at 80% AMI or less, and that they would also agree that the remaining 70% of the housing units could be leased at market rate. Commencing at 16 years from the date of initial issuance of a final certificate of occupancy, the parties basically agreed that they could, the units could be reduced for the final five years of the restrictive covenant, so that 20% of the total housing units upon the property will serve low-income persons with incomes of 80% or less AMI. And the idea behind this, at the time this was being negotiated, was to try to get as long a period of time as we possibly could for low-income housing and for what is oftentimes referred to as workforce housing. The key, and what I'm pleased with with this, was that there was a complaint made to the state auditor's office that this was not sufficient, and that complaint was rejected by the state auditor, and that it was found that, you know, that the city did receive value, and constitutionally so with regard to providing housing for the poor. So, you know, I remember when Griswold was still there, the remnants of it. I wasn't here when it initially burned down. I do remember the efforts on the, the community renewal area to try to cure that blight. It has been a long, long time, and it looks like maybe we're finally going to be able to put something there, and most importantly, that it will provide, you know, affordable low-income housing for the people that need it the most.
Thanks for that recap. Now city manager.
So when it comes to the noise ordinance, so the basics of our noise ordinance is that any noise that you make in your home is supposed to stay confined within the walls of your home. And if a complaint is lodged that your neighbors can hear what's going on, and let's say our officers arrive, if they arrive and they can hear outside of the walls of your home a noise that they deem your neighbors can hear, you technically are in violation of the noise ordinance. However, in most instances, when officers arrive on scene, I was asking Chief Allen this question, we write very few citations for these types of things. We're usually able to mediate those types of concerns when they're raised, when the officer on scene, in a very peaceful manner.
All right, so there's not a time, like after 10:00 PM, that kind of question? And then I've got Mayor Potem.
I'm going to ask the chief to run up here.
Okay.
It's an all-star cast to answer these questions tonight.
I know. We are just pulling out all the stops.
So yes, after 10 o'clock, it's a little more strict. So between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, the noise has to reach not so much a reasonable threshold. I'm not saying that right, but it's, but the ordinance does say that it is more strict after 10 o'clock.
Okay. All right, thanks for that clarification, and Mayor Potem.
Thank you. So I appreciate that the Armory is a really cool space. I'm glad we're setting it up, but I also believe that the Fourth Avenue having loud guitars, bass, drums, keyboards, amplified vocals, and horns is part of our history and our culture, and I think that that, that it's important, what Peter's bringing up, to protect that there can be rock and roll, and country, and blues, and ska, and reggae right down Fourth Avenue. So I think this is going to be a tension as we have more housing units, and I appreciate the concern raised. So I'm in support of this project. I think this is, this has been a long time coming to figure out what to do about the blighted building, and I think it's positive, but I also think we're going to have to continue to wrestle. We've, you know, we've called part of this section.
Artisan tech.
The artisan and tech area, and so the question of whether we can have noisy welding or punk bands practicing in an artisan tech, because there's also apartments or condominiums, is, I think it's going to be a tension, and I would err on the side of at least allowing noise until 2:00 AM, when the bars close.
You know, it's like renters beware. It's like if you're renting a spot on Fourth Avenue, it's going to be noisy. All right, Councilmember Payne?
Yes, exactly, Madam Mayor. I was actually going to suggest that, I don't know if it's, it's similar to folks that live around JBLM, right? I mean, if you're going to rent a home or buy a home in that area, you know there's going to be a significant amount of noise. And so I was just thinking, you know, maybe there's a clause in a tenant lease agreement or something like that that notifies the tenants there that there is, there are musicians next door, and you may hear them from time to time. And so that, to me, seems like it would be, it would make sense to make sure that we don't have any future conflicts, you know, in the future between the new residents in the space next door.
Okay, I've got Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Parshley. Peter, look at all this conversation you caused. This is great.
I want to let this speak one time.
Yes, I'm so sorry. This is a discussion for us, but if you want to, somebody from staff can go take your comments out in the lobby, or email us.
Or email us.
Just email. We read your email, too. All right.
I was just going to say that, you know, there was something in what you said that spurred all this conversation, but one of the things that you said was like, the scene down here downtown is one of the reasons that people want to move here, and that's one of the reasons that we need a lot more housing, too. And what Mayor Potem Gilman was just saying is like figuring out how we share space among more people. That is one of our biggest challenges here. You know, if we don't address the housing crisis, it continues to get more expensive, people get displaced, but we also don't want to lose that part of Olympia that makes it super cool. So I just want to thank you for coming here. Like, I don't think we would have had all of this conversation up here without you being here to express your concerns. So thank you.
Councilmember Parshley.
First, thank you again, Peter. I've said it once, but thank you, councilmates. This is clearly a conversation that we should continue, because as Councilmember Madron pointed out, we need more housing. And as Mayor Potem pointed out, we're going to continue to have that tension between what makes Olympia unique, the music, the bars, the outdoor performers, and during our different events downtown, and we have to find a way. I live downtown, because I like that kind of tension. I like to see the people out moving around, and I like to hear the music down the street in the crypt as I'm walking home. So I enjoy all that, but we have to find a way to mix both of them, and I think we should table the rest of that conversation and bring it up at another time. Would you like a motion, Mayor?
I would love a motion.
I can read it off my sheet, or if you've got it right there. Okay. I would like to move, to approve the petition to vacate and direct staff to prepare a vacation ordinance and require payment to the city of one-half of the appraised value.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, all the team, all the staff members that brought this forward to this point. I can't believe we're actually going to have something on the Griswold property. It's like, yay. All right. We're moving on now to our other business section of the agenda. We have two items this evening. We've got 6A, 6B. So 6A is approval of a resolution authorizing a funding agreement with Olympia Mutual Aid Partners for the establishment, operation, management, and maintenance of a tiny home shelter village. And then a companion item is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Olympia Mutual Aid Partners, or OLIMAP, for the establishment, operation, management, and maintenance of a tiny home shelter village. They sound just the same. Anyhow, I'm sure they're different somehow. And I'm going to invite forward Darian Lightfoot, who is our Director of Housing and Homelessness Response, and all things just kick butt around housing.
Hello, Councilwoman Mayor. Thank you so much. My name is Darian Lightfoot. I'm the Director of Housing and Homeless Response. Yes, you have two resolutions before you tonight. One is a lease agreement, and one is a funding agreement, just a one-word difference there. And we're having a presentation on both of those right after this. So Franz Anderson was purchased by the city and the county at the beginning of 2022, and the goal of Franz Anderson was to build permanent supportive housing and some sort of temporary use housing solution on the site. And last month, on June 20th, you approved the purchase and sale agreement of the permanent supportive housing with Lehigh, and tonight we're here to discuss that temporary option that we've been in discussion with for the past year. I received an email from Keith Staley last month, or last week, saying, "I saw the email. I saw that the purchase and sale agreement went through. This was a twinkle in our eye a year ago," and I'm so happy to see that they are both coming to fruition tonight. So how cool. And I'll pass it over to Ty Gundell, who's going to talk more about the tiny home village at Franz Anderson, and then we'll be here to answer any of your questions. So take it over to Ty.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Potem, and councilmembers and staff. As Darian mentioned, my name's Ty Gundell, and I'm the Executive Director for Olympia Mutual Aid Partners, also known as OLIMAP, and here tonight to talk about our operations plan for the Franz Anderson Tiny Home Village, and cannot be more excited to be here to talk through this and to also have the opportunity to talk with you all about any questions you might have. And before going into all of the details about the operations, I also wanted to provide just a little bit more introduction to OLIMAP for folks that are less familiar with what we do and also what we've been up to in the community over the last couple of years. So OLIMAP's mission is to support equitable access to safe, just, and warm places for people who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness in Thurston County to call home. The services that we provide include site support, site management, outreach, care navigation or case management, supported self-governance services, and also we provide coordinated entry services. And we provide all of these services through a variety of programs, including the Rights of Way Outreach Program, our New Hope Tiny Home Village, the Nickerson Community, the Safer Spaces Program, which is, involves outreach and smoke and fire mitigation at camp communities, and then also our Stability Stays Hotel Program. We're also currently the coordinated entry provider for single adults in Thurston County, and of course, all of the services I mentioned will be provided at Franz Anderson. So without further ado, going into the operations plan, so Darian started with an overview, but just a very high-level overview of the program. The tiny home village will be providing 24/7 shelter for, for single adults and couples without children. Every member of each couple will be provided their own tiny home, so even though we will be accepting couples without children, we don't foresee the total population of the village going beyond 50. And because the site is 24/7, we will be having staff on-site 24/7, and I'll talk a little bit more about it, the staffing plan, in a moment. In addition to 24/7 staffing, there will be basic hygiene and community services and facilities on-site that are accessible to the residents 24/7, so that'll include showers, laundry, restrooms, and then also basic supplies, and in addition to shared kitchen space and community spaces for folks to spend time together outside of their tiny homes. The site right now is planned to start accepting residents in August, so very, very soon. We're shooting for the end of August and hoping to start moving, you know, about 10 folks a week, and once that, once the project is open. And as far as project goals, really for us, and I think, you know, for our partners and for the city, this project is really about creating, improving, and uplifting safety, community, and connection, not only for the people that are going to be accessing the village for shelter, but for our entire community. And I say that because, you know, we really recognize that while the folks that are, you know, staying outdoors right now, as we're in here talking about this, are disproportionately impacted, we really understand how the crisis of homelessness and having folks sleeping outdoors without access to other options impacts every single person in our community and has been for a long time. So as... So as far as how we get there and how we uphold that and improve safety and community and connection, that's really about making sure that our operations are grounded in a commitment to best practices, to safety, to equity, to providing quality and comprehensive services that are really designed to like meet the unique needs of the people that this project is, is meant to serve, which are the folks who have historically had the hardest time accessing services and, and housing. So who's eligible for the Franz Anderson Tiny Home Village? Initially, when we open up in August, as I mentioned earlier, it'll always be unsheltered single adults and couples, but initially referrals will only be taken from the Right of Way Program. So it will be unsheltered single adults and couples who are currently living on state rights of ways in Thurston County. Eventually, the plan is for the program to start accepting referrals through the coordinated entry system, still single adults and couples without children, but that won't start happening until the Rights of Way Safety Initiative is further along and, and more wrapped up. The resident intake, so any resident that's wanting to come and access the site and start staying there will be required to go through a basic resident intake and, before moving in. And that will include reviewing and signing the community agreements. It'll include completing basic resident paperwork and intake paperwork, and also an overview of the program, the services, the facilities, and, and other welcoming activities, too. As far as staffing goes, like I mentioned, we'll have site, we'll have staff on-site 24/7 and a minimum of two staff on at all times. During daytime hours, we're going to have staffing closer to four to six folks at all times. We're hoping to keep the minimum during daytime hours at four. And the combination, the staff will be a combination of both management staff, case managers, site support workers, site assistants, and also a couple of on-call staff. And the intention of having on-call staff is to make sure that if we have regularly-scheduled workers who are unable to fill their shifts, that we have folks to call in so we can really ensure that there is adequate staffing 24/7. The site management staff and also, you know, other OLIMAP leadership will be sharing, rotating on-call responsibilities as well to provide additional support in evening hours or during times when more support is needed. Support services on-site will include site support and management. So that includes really everything that is needed for the, for the day-to-day operations of the site. It includes security, it means working with the neighbors to address any neighborhood complaints or concerns, working with the residents to address day-to-day needs or issues that arise, checking in with residents about their needs and trying to support them and meeting them, providing basic, you know, de-escalation services, and also, and, and also making sure that the site remains tidy, clean, the facilities are functioning, just making sure things are running as smoothly as possible day-to-day. We'll also be providing a supported self-governance services. And what this just really means is making sure that we're providing meaningful opportunities for the folks who are living at the site to be engaged in the site management and operations, right? So providing community meetings, making sure folks are aware of what's going on, what the, what the community concerns are involving residents and, and our plans to address any concerns that arise. Also, all site residents will have access to case management services. Case management won't be required, but will be available for anybody who is wanting to access those services. And that'll be provided by our caseworkers, who will be able to support folks in connecting to a variety of services, all the way from, you know, connecting to mental health, substance use services, getting an ID for the first time or again, and all the way up to, of course, supporting folks and connecting to improved shelter and housing options. You know, because our main goal is to support the folks that are here and, and connecting to permanent and improved housing. In addition to those services, we are going to be providing basic needs and supplies. And, you know, a big part of this is making sure that we are reducing neighborhood impacts by making sure folks have access to as many things as they need on-site. So basic health, harm reduction, survival supplies, anything that's needed, we want to be able to make that as easily accessible to folks as, as possible. We will also be providing and facilitating skills-building activities. So for example, like budgeting, self-advocacy workshops, and working with partners and other community resources to facilitate those, those activities. We also really would like to be hosting and facilitating community-building events, so not just for the residents, but events that we can invite the broader community to, the neighbors, our partners. And so that might look like community art, cleaning, just holiday events or celebrations. We really want to support building a stronger sense of community and belonging, and we see that as a really important piece of that. We also will be providing increased hazardous weather support in, in the case that there are hazardous weather events, which are bound to happen. So we will, we, also OLIMAP was recently awarded to take on the role of providing additional hazardous weather support during hazardous weather events for the homeless and unsheltered community in general. So we'll really be able to tap in, you know, to those resources, too, to be able to provide that increased support during any hazardous weather events that, that come up. As I mentioned earlier, safety really is a number-one priority, if not the number-one priority, because we recognize that we really can't meet any other goal unless we're ensuring that anyone who is living at the site or impacted by the project feels safe and is safe. That's the first thing that's needed to get to anything else. So we'll be really centering that in any decision or operations that we're, that we're making or doing during this project. And some of the ways, specific ways that we plan to support safety at the site, we will make sure that all the entrances and exits are monitored 24/7. That'll be a basic responsibility of our site support workers, that, that making sure that any visitor restrictions or guidelines are upheld. The site will have lighting 24/7 as well as security cameras. And we've already had in place, you know, a plan for responding to neighborhood concerns or complaints that I'll go into in a moment, but just making sure that we're upholding that and also changing it or amending it if that's needed to improve the project. Of course, the community agreements and accountability processes will be a huge part of making sure that the site remains safe for the residents and also for the surrounding community. And OLIMAP will also be taking some extra safety precautions to, for the, to support the safety of the residents, including providing safety whistles for residents who might not be able to reach out for help from inside their tiny homes. So just making sure that there's ways that we can be alerted to any safety concerns that might not be obvious from just what we can see. So to go into the community agreements, so, and I want to start by saying that we adopted these community agreements from the Interfaith Works Emergency Overnight Shelter. So we really leaned on our other, you know, partners and collaborators to help us, you know, guide in figuring out the community agreements and operations for this village. And this was one of the ways that we did that. So the basic community agreements will include taking responsibility for yourself and your belongings, taking pride in your space and keeping it tidy. Use of any illicit substance will be prohibited on-site. It'll be an expectation that folks act safely and are not using violence, and also that all residents respect and protect the space, each other, and the surrounding community. So as I mentioned, any resident that's at the site will be expected to uphold those community agreements in order to both access the site and to stay at the village. And we're really committed to using an accountability approach that balances both the individual needs and safety of the residents, but also the needs and safety of the broader community. You know, we recognize that that is an ongoing and always balance. And we're also very committed to working with folks who are maybe struggling to meet those community agreements to try and minimize any chance of exits back into unsheltered homelessness, right? Because we also recognize that the more folks we have outdoors, that also impacts our community and safety. And so when community agreements are violated, some of the specific ways folks might be held accountable would include, you know, a meeting with their caseworker, a verbal warning, a written notice of agreement violation. It might look like pursuing accountability processes, like through the, through the government, self-governance structure, loss of privileges. And of course, you know, expulsion is also something that could, that could happen if we're either, if the violation is egregious enough, or if we're not seeing progress based on, you know, some of the other actions and steps that have been taken. So again, while we'll be working very hard to prevent and avoid any impacts on the community, we understand that, you know, some impacts may, may occur. And so we want to have a really effective plan in place for responding to any community complaints or concerns that arise. And we will be having staff available 24/7 that can be reached by any neighbors that have concerns or complaints. Folks can reach out to us via phone, email, and we'll be sharing, you know, all the necessary contact information with the surrounding neighbors and making sure that that's really easily accessible for folks. Timely response is really important. So, you know, our expectation is going to be that people who are communicating concerns to us are followed up with as soon as possible, if not in the moment, as soon as humanly possible, right? And, and definitely within the same day or same hours. And not, part of that will also be dependent on exactly what the, you know, the concern is. But outside of just checking in with people about what the concerns are, we want to make sure that there's continual communication throughout the response process. So as we, you know, investigate further and talk to other people who are impacted, we're going to be checking back in with the folks who are communicating concerns. And when next steps have been figured out, either by working with our partners, working with the residents, and the concerns have been addressed or resolved, we're going to be following up with the folks who communicated the concerns in the first place, both to make sure they're aware of what steps we're taking, but also to get feedback from them about how they felt we were able to respond. Do they feel like their concerns were addressed? All of those sorts of things. And we're very committed to making sure that not only are the complaints and concerns documented, but also what our response is and what is the feedback that we're getting from the, from the community. We'll also be just making sure that there's a number of opportunities and ways for people to reach out to us. So aside from being able to just contact staff, we will have regularly-scheduled neighborhood meetings, including meetings with the Neighborhood Advisory Council, who will be, you know, serve in the role of making sure that we're being made aware of any concerns or complaints or impacts, and, and we'll be working with them to address those concerns. So more to talk about for, for neighborhood engagement. As I mentioned, we will be wanting to make sure that we have as many ways as possible for folks to communicate with us. So even before opening up the village, we're going to be reaching out to neighbors, reaching out to businesses, making sure they know who we are, what's going on. We've already been able to, you know, have one community meeting with folks as well. And we hope to have maybe at least one more before we open up. And then, once the site opens up, for the first three months, we plan to have open community meetings that will be accessible to, to anybody. Again, just to hear updates about the project, make sure we're on top of any concerns that are coming up more, more immediately. And then also during this time, that's when we're going to be developing the Neighborhood Advisory Council, so, which will be made up of representatives from the neighborhood, both residential and, and business neighbors as well. And that will be formed through an application process. And we, our intention is to involve our partners, including the City of Olympia, in that, in that process as well. And once that committee is formed, they will be meeting monthly with us. Again, their responsibility will be to support us and making sure that word is getting out to the rest of the neighborhood and community about updates with the project, what's going on, making sure that we're hearing about any community concerns or complaints that aren't getting to us from other ways, and also working with them to address the concerns and to build a relationship between the neighborhood and the residents. That'll be a really important piece of the Neighborhood Advisory Council's role, too, is supporting us and building that sense of community and bringing everyone else into that. Additionally, we will have volunteer opportunities for not just neighbors, but really anyone in the community. So folks will be able to assist with things like monitoring the front desk and watching the entrances and exits, and distributing food, distributing supplies, helping with laundry, those sorts of things, attending community events. So we really just, again, want to create as many opportunities as possible to bring folks together and to make sure that everybody is feeling safe and welcome and excited about this, about this project. And with that, leave plenty of time for questions. So, yeah, happy to take them.
Nicely done. And thanks back to you. Yes, very, very nicely done. I'm sure I'm not alone in remembering some of the first times we met and seeing where you and this group have, have gotten and, and, and taken us with you. And, and it, I'm just, it's kind of a proud moment, actually. So really, really excited that, that we are at this, this juncture, especially with this project. And I can't really think, after seeing this presentation and everything you guys have thought about, I can't think of a group that is better poised to actually help move these people into this, this community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go to the left, got Councilmember Cooper, followed by Councilmember Parshley.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I also was having that sort of same emotional response as Ty was talking. I think one of the best measures of success personally for me is when you can churn your activism and your advocacy into meaningful work that helps people. And that's what you and Robert have done.
Yeah.
And just like Jefferson and Meg before you. And so I kind of wonder, like, who's next, right? Like, if you're out there, come and yell at us and then come and make service, right? Because, and you didn't yell at us, you were respectful and, and, and you brought a, a real conversation into this, into this chambers, and I appreciate it. So thank you both and everyone with you on this project. I have, I have two questions. One of them is, I think, probably for our staff and one is for you. So one of the things that I was a, a little bit taken aback by was the move-in rate at the new King Oscar motel in Lacey that is, seems really slow. Oh, people used, used to call it that, was the Days Inn most recently. Thank you. I still think of it as the King Oscar, before it became a beautiful shelter. Anyway, so the, the, it's a slow move-in rate. So what's your kind of move-in rate for this, this project?
Yeah, great. And I can speak to that, too, from the outreach perspective, because one of the things I, I didn't mention is that, especially since referrals are going to be coming through the Rights of Way Project, and OLIMAP is currently the organization that's contracted to provide the outreach support through the Rights of Way Program. So our staff that are already out in the field are the folks that are going to be working with the folks to get them moved in to the Franz Anderson Village. So there's going to be a lot of, like, continuity of care there, which we're really excited about. But also that means we're, yeah, very on the ground and understand where, what the move-in process is looking like. And one of the main reasons why the move-in process looks like moving in 10 people a week is, one, because us and also I know City of Olympia learned through, like, the closure of Ensign Road, how important it is to kind of move folks in pieces and in smaller groups so that folks can get acquainted with the site, be moving in with people that they already feel comfortable with, making sure that, like, the site, the staff that are on-site are able to focus on making sure that that smaller group of folks feels welcome, has all of their needs met, rather than moving in so many people at one time that folks are kind of falling through the cracks. And obviously, as much as so many people are so excited about moving into Maple Court and the hotel and the tiny home villages, remember that folks have been living in these spaces for, for years and years. And as much as folks are excited, it also means leaving community and home, and that's a big change for people. And so it also means that we take the time and move folks in in smaller groups so that in that move-in process, we can really be talking with folks about, hey, your turn is coming up for this opportunity, let's talk about what that looks like, what are your concerns, can we talk through that now? People aren't able to bring everything, right? And so helping people go through their belongings and what they might need to leave behind, it's, it takes a lot of time and support and coordination, too. We've definitely, as an example, we've been, you know, moving folks in from Slater Kenny to Maple Court, same process of about 10 folks a week. And that has been stretching it. You know, we're out there three days a week with, with the city, with other organizations to move folks in, and we're meeting those numbers and we're getting, you know, nine, 10 folks in a week. But it, it takes a lot, and it, and it's a lot of work to coordinate that. So that's where that comes from.
I appreciate that, because what you said, I think, is that you're meeting people where they are, and that takes a lot more time than picking somebody up and moving them.
Yeah.
So I actually really appreciate that answer, even though I didn't like the slowness. It's just the anticipation of these, these beds being, being slept in, right?
Absolutely.
And so my other question is about the contract, but I wonder if I should save it in case other folks have questions for OLIMAP. What do you think?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I guess this one's for Darian. I do a lot of contracting with state and local government in my day job, and everyone's moving towards performance-based contracting that doesn't require reimbursement. I would like to see that here and wonder if you're in that space yet or, or what you're thinking there before we vote on this one.
These are commerce dollars, so we have very little say on how the reimbursement works. So we're going by the state's standards and its reimbursement base right now, but I, I agree. I mean, standing this contract up, we are really clear that these monthly reimbursements will be substantial, and having OLIMAP foot those bills from the start and we reimburse that large sum, it is a lot. It's a big lift. So I'm in alignment with that, but we're, we have to abide by the state's contract requirements in this. in this.
Then let me paraphrase, so I make sure I understand that, then that's because this is a sub-grantee or a subcontractor of the Commerce, and our contract with Commerce requires us to do reimbursement.
Correct.
Okay. So we should lean on them to change, like other state agencies are, in making everyone's life easier. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilmember Parsley and Councilmember Payne.
I, I, I can't say it as well as Councilmember Cooper and the mayor has said it, but it's, it's just, I feel joy tonight watching you and Robert stand here from where we began in 2018 and see this project and the beautiful slides.
Yeah, we love the slides.
I mean, gorgeous. But could you do me a favor? This is my first question, it's an easy one. There's more people in the room besides you and Robert. Could you introduce those folks?
Yeah, would be my pleasure. So to Robert's left is our right, sorry, guys, Jenny Milchenco. Jenny started with OLEMAP when we first became Incorporated. She was, you know, the first new person brought on, besides like myself and Robert and Becca, who y'all have met before, too. Jenny started as our data entry and quality assurance specialist, and still does a huge part of that work for all of our programs in the organization, but also is our current program lead for our coordinated entry program. So Jenny's been with us the whole way and still doing a lot of amazing work. And then also, front is my sister. So this is Hannah, and she's actually here not just as my sister, but she has recently started doing her capstone project with OLEMAP. And the intention of that project, she's in, going to grad school for occupational therapy, and she's going to be working with us to develop a training curriculum and education for outreach workers, OLEMAP and others, as well as participants and folks living in the camps for how to do wound care, take care of basic health needs in environments like camps where people don't have access to a lot of the basic things like running water and bandages and stuff. So how can people take care of those things as safely as possible? So that's who's with us today.
Lovely. Thank you. I was curious. And my, I have two simple questions.
Yeah.
Well, mainly, one simple one, and then one a little more complex. Are you going to allow pets?
Yes. Yes. So we will be allowing all pets, and we will have, you know, pet areas and plenty of supplies there to make sure that we're keeping the area clean, too. But yes, all, all pets will be allowed.
We should talk later about some volunteer ideas I have for that.
Great.
My, my more involved question potentially is, how are we going to connect your skills work with some of the ongoing programs like Pac Mountain and the Chambers workforce development? Are we planning to make that connection? Because it seems like a good next step once we, we are able to build those skills.
Yeah. That'll lead up to Darian.
Yeah. Yes, Mike Reed and I are continuing to work to continue the work that Vallejo and Journey and Jobs are doing in our current tiny home villages, so that is more to come. We're hoping to expand those to do work at Franz Anderson, to be able to have the success that they're having at Plum and Quinn's, et cetera. So yes, more to come.
Excellent. And then I'm just going to leave a, a comment to you, Darian Rich, and the city manager. There's still money sitting in Lot for sanitation trailers that includes laundry and showers, and it's not being used, and it hasn't been for two years, just to let you know.
That there's money waiting on the table.
Yeah.
Let's grab it.
He's calling him right now.
All right, he's on the phone with the director. All right, next I have Councilmember Payne.
Hi, Ty. Thank you for the presentation. I actually just wanted to just give a quick thank you to you and the rest of you as well at OLEMAP, because, you know, every time we, the city announces plans to open one of these sites, the first thing we hear about is safety. And so I appreciate the fact that you mentioned that that is the top priority, not only for the people that are there, but for the people that are, are in the area, in the neighborhood as well. And so I think it's really, really genius of you all to think about the neighborhood impact and have a plan for that, to include data tracking, which is awesome. That's, that's not something you really think about, but I think it's important in terms of, could really be useful to us in, in terms of telling that story about how these sites do help the folks that are there, and they do, don't necessarily always raise to the level of concern that people have when we make these proposals. And so I think it's a genius idea to, to have that data in your back pocket. And also, I think it's a, a great idea to continue with neighborhood engagement. I think it's much easier to complain about people you don't know, right? And so I think that's a very smart idea to make sure that there's a continuous plan to have folks that are residing there engaging with the neighbors around them. So thank you for that work.
All right. Anybody else up in the dais? All right. Thanks again. And now I'm going to have Darian come back up and walk us through, we've got two motions. I didn't know whether we need to make them separately or can we merge?
Separately, please.
Separately, please.
Okay.
Mark's head is floating. No merging.
Yeah. Thank you.
So Councilmember Cooper.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing a funding agreement with Olympia Mutual Aid Partners for the establishment, operation, management, and maintenance of a tiny home village.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6B, anybody want to do a motion? You got it.
I would move to approve a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Olympia Mutual Aid Partners for the establishment, operation, management, and maintenance of a tiny home village.
Second.
Third.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, congratulations, and get some rest, because you're going to need it. All right. So that concludes with the regular part of our agenda, and we're going to go to council reports now, and I'm going to start with Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Nothing official to report, though I will say in my personal capacity, actually, I don't know if I've said this in public, I'm a commissioner for the Thurston County, for...
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority. Blank mine. For the Thurston County Housing Authority, appointed by the Thurston County Commissioners recently. And we had a special meeting today to approve the purchase and sale agreement for the Tom Order Inn, which, thanks to Darian and her team, was a rapid access grant that they accessed from the Department of Commerce. And so that will be 24 units that will be dedicated for the lowest-income seniors in our community, the ones who are on the most fixed income. So couldn't have been more proud to be a part of that vote today because of the nexus between those two jobs.
Yes. It's just excellent news. And for those of you that might not know which development that is, it's formerly the Shalimar Suites back in the 90s. So they're lovely units. It's fancy, then. Anyhow, it's, it's just a much-needed gap in our housing supply, and so it's just really, really exciting to know that that's coming online. All right, Councilmember Wen.
I just, I have one great one. On Sunday, right here in council chambers, if you can imagine it, this room was looking even more lovely than it does right now. We had some young people in person. We had probably about 10, and then online, we had about 10, too, I think a little over. And that's not including our consultants and then some staff and myself. And what were we all in here doing? We were trying to form recommendations for Olympia's first youth council. So these are young people that are about high school age, though they, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're affiliated with the school, though they are folks in our area from different schools and some, again, not affiliated with the school. And they just worked magically. They had everything mapped out to a T while we had staff and consultants into the room. Our two lead facilitators are, or were the two, what we call youth liaisons. So we have about 20, 25 youth advisors on the project that are being compensated through our contract with Trueclusion. And then we have two lead young people, the youth liaisons, that initially approached us for this project, so Olympia High School Youth, and have just been with it since last year. This year, we've been meeting every two weeks. We meet for a check-in, even if there's not really much to report, we at least meet for it. And so this was the first time on Sunday that we got to see everyone in person. And they had smart, really responsible, thoughtful recommendations, and they had respectful discourse. That was amazing. I was like, oh, we should take some notes for this, you know? No, but seriously, I think that oftentimes that generation, it would have been Generation Z, they don't get a lot of respect for how brilliant they are, and we got to see it all morning and into the afternoon, and it was really lovely. So really looking forward to my community, livability and public safety committee colleagues to be able to receive a presentation on these recommendations in September, and then our full council getting to meet these young people in October. And then also just wanted to do a very, very special, I know you see me looking at you, I'm doing it, a very special thank you and shout out to Assistant to the City Manager, Susan Grisham, that has been one of the lead staff on this, on this effort. And this is in addition to her regular duties, so thank you so much.
Yay. Did you call her Assistant City Manager?
Assistant.
Well, you never know. Never rule it out.
I was just like...
Assistant to the City Manager.
She's shaking her head no.
AKA not taking orders from other people.
Awesome. All right. Thank you for that. Councilmember Parsley.
I just want to start by thanking Councilmember Wen for this work. This youth council, I think, is going to be something we're going to be very proud of. So thank you. And thank you, Susan, the person behind the curtain in the back. I have two things to report, and neither one is a lot, I promise. We did meet the Thurston Climate Mitigation Steering Committee, which is now called Thurston Climate Collaborative Executive Group, met on the end of June, and mainly what we were doing is taking action on the items from our retreat, which is formalizing the Regional Cooperative for 2023 into 2024, which is a residential energy audit and home energy audit campaign, which are different. The idea is by the end of 2024, we will be bringing back to jurisdictions and ordinance for the jurisdictions, legal and councils or commission to evaluate, to set up a regional energy audit. The program proposal for the campaign, which is getting out the information not only about the audits, but about incentives and tax incentives that might be available for this, as well as connection to some of the local builders and mortgage groups that are going to be working with us. We also approved a standing agenda item to help the county with their legacy forest project with the DNR and trying to get some of our legacy forests enrolled in the DNR's carbon project. And then we discussed a lot about our ILA. Basically, our new ILA, which will be coming back to this council hopefully in August, potentially September, whenever legal gets done with it, it's just, we're going to clarify the roles. We're changing, as we said, from a TRPC-driven process to a staff-driven process, because every jurisdiction now has climate staff, and we don't need to have a independent regional. And we're going to be working with a community action work group, and they're going to meet regularly, whereas the executive team is only going to meet quarterly. And the community action work group is going to provide the expertise for the various projects that will be done, and this does not preclude that jurisdictions such as Tom Order in Olympia, Olympia in the county, or Tom Order Olympia in the county getting together and doing side projects. It's just making sure that we work together more efficiently. My last one is Jazzcom, Joint Animal Service Commission. There was a big shout-out, which you guys didn't hear. Thank you for Olympia coming to visit the shelter, and I was joined with Councilmember Madron, Councilmember Payne, Mayor Protam, and the mayor at the shelter to go visit why there is such a problem with the shelter. And we're trying to encourage the other jurisdictions to go visit so they can understand. Just some quick fun things, they did do their adoption thing, they event with Best Friends. They got 28 animals adopted in one day. Best Friends provided most of the adoption fees, people only had to pay 25 bucks. We did have an increase in surrenders and strays from last year, but primarily due to that large hoarding case in Thurston County, which is over 300 cats. But because there was such publicity, we've had two more potential hoarding situations show up, but they're voluntary, so we've had a sudden increase. The good news is we've reduced our euthanasias until the hoarding situation came in down to 1% or less, which we are truly now a no-kill shelter. Yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing. And then lastly, just a shout-out to our executive director. She was selected for, as a speaker to the Best Friends National Conference, which is a big deal, and I love her title. Combating toxic work environments through systemic change, through changing job descriptions, salaries, and evaluating the best workplace.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Parsley? All right, so we're going to go on to Mayor Protam-Guillman.
Great. I have a couple of items that I'm going to hold until next week, because I'd like to take a moment of privilege to recognize that Councilmember Madron is here working with us on her birthday.
Oh, yeah.
And if we could have Councilmember Wen, the mayor, and Councilmember Payne's microphones on, I think it won't feed back too badly.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Danny Madron.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, Danny.
I'm glad I didn't have to sing myself.
Thank you, Clark. All right, that's what I got. Okay, Councilmember Payne.
Yes, I just wanted to mention one thing. I met with the South Town Military Communities Partnership, which is one of my interjurisdictional assignments, the week before last, and we received a brief on a proposal around childcare as it relates to the military and the community that surrounds it, surrounds the base. So on a national scale, the, the lack of adequate childcare, it essentially has an impact, $128 billion impact to our, our nation's economy, because we don't meet the need with childcare. And this includes military families as well. And so people think there's, there's the base, and so, oh, well, there's childcare on base. The reality is, is that there is, I believe there is one childcare facility that usually, I believe there's a ranking structure for that, for folks to have access to, and the reality is, is that most people live off the installation anyway. And so it's incumbent upon the surrounding communities to really help with that need. And so one of the things that this particular work group that I'm a part of is looking at bringing back to the full steering committee is a proposal to have local governments in Pierce County and eventually in Thurston, look at their commercial zoning for commercial childcare centers, because they have recognized that this is contributing to an, an impact in a lack of these sites, and they, and they prefer that it be a discussion at the local level. And so they're going to do a little bit of work on Thurston County to include us in this work as well, to really get an understanding of what the picture is for us, and then perhaps that might result at us looking at our own zoning and how that is, is impacting or not commercial childcare centers.
Thanks for that report out. And last, we have Councilmember Madron.
I've got two items. I'm going to start with the Land Use and Environment Committee, which met on June 22nd. We talked about sidewalks, which was actually a really, really great discussion. Our staff has done a ton of research into what other cities are doing around how we maintain and repair sidewalks. Well, and one, one note is they are going to be proposing $500,000 in the 2024 Capital Facilities Plan for sidewalk repair. That includes $300,000 from our, from our year-end funds, I believe. Yes. And they are, our staff are going to be doing a little bit more research and coming back to the Land Use Committee, but some of the things that we've talked about are like, you know, what are the decision points for us in moving forward on this, you know? in moving forward on this? You know, do, does the city repair all sidewalks? Do we repair some of them? Do we repair none of them? There's examples that run the gamut with different cities. So staff are going to be digging into that more. Who pays for sidewalk maintenance and repair? And then also, is it inventory or is it complaint-based? And I think among us on the committee, we talked about the more equitable approach being an inventory-based mechanism for that. And staff are recommending that we do that inventory at a cost of $100,000. And so they will be coming back to the Land Use Committee talking about, okay, well, what is the size of the problem we're talking about? What are the costs involved? What are the staff needs around that? So stay tuned. I know that this is running concurrently with the Finance Committee talking about how do we, how do we fund all things transportation, including sidewalks? And then we also had a presentation on the Rental Housing Registration Program by Krista Lenson. And that, that was a really extensive discussion. We had some really good options put in front of us. And the Land Use Committee has given some feedback to staff to continue to shape that. It's going to be coming to the council as a whole, I believe, August 19, as a study session, so that we all get the chance to dig in, learn about what is being proposed, be able to ask questions. I won't get into the details of it here, because, you know, it is a new, a new, a proposal for a new program that has a lot of technical details to it. But that is going to be coming to all of us to be able to learn more, ask questions, and, and give, and give feedback, see what, see, see what comes right after that study session. My second item is, I have a referral here to the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee. This was co-written by myself, Councilmembers Payne and Wen. And this is about the Salary Commission. And so the Salary Commission ordinance was created a few years ago. And as a city, we have, we've done a lot of work around, you know, our values around diversity, equity, inclusion, all of that. And so this is asking the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee to reevaluate the Olympia Municipal Code for the Salary Commission, look at processes for recruitment, you know, evaluate any barriers to community participation and any challenges with the process. And the hope is that, you know, that the, that CLIPS would either, in the, in the referral says this should be completed before the Salary Commission convenes in 2024. And that is June or July. So there's actually a full year for this work to take place. And, you know, some, some, some examples of like, you know, where there might be challenges in our code is that, is the requirement that they meet in June or July. You know, each time they've met, they've given us a COLA. But that comes like, you know, it ends up coming like eight months later than when it's given to the rest of the staff. So that's, that's one thing to consider. I think we've also gotten some feedback from the Salary Commission the past couple of years that I think can inform how this looks moving forward. You know, last year, they're, they made a recommendation to future Salary Commissions that they, you know, convene one year, evaluate our salaries, and, you know, do, do the full process. And then the following year, we just get the COLA that staff get. But in the, in the OMC, they would actually be required to approve that. And that's, that's a barrier that we could remove for them. In a previous year, you know, they talked about, you know, diversity among council being very important with, you know, diversity that represents Olympia's population, lived experiences, and the importance of compensation to council members on a sustainable and equitable basis. And they said, we believe this warrants further consideration, but it would require more time devoted to public engagement and discussion. And so in looking at what, you know, some cities do, and I am trusting that the CLIPS Committee with some support from staff will take a look at how Salary Commissions have evolved over the past few years. You know, look at things like, okay, some cities do offer public hearings or other types of public engagement around Salary Commissions. Some cities do surveys of council members, which Councilmember Cooper mentioned earlier. Some cities do an open solicitation so that, you know, people who maybe aren't known to us as a council or to the mayor might be able to express an interest and be considered for that. So that's, that's just, you know, some of the thoughts going into this. But it really is just kind of a check-in on like, okay, we've had this in place for a few years now. Like, what, what, what could we do better around this? And how can we, you know, just kind of calibrate it to, you know, how things are evolving in other cities and also how things are evolving within our own? And, you know, Councilmember Payne or Wen, if you want to add anything, please do.
Yeah, thanks so much. I'll just be brief. As a member of the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee, I am looking forward to, yes, thank you for that. I'm also the chair. And I'm looking forward to bringing this on in our work plan. I don't anticipate this to be too sort of big an item. I think that it's something that we could probably incorporate this, this year. So stay tuned for the discussion at our, at our CLIPS meeting on the 26 to figure out when we'll, we'll fit it in. And also, just the makeup of CLIPS, I think, is wonderful for it, because we have varying perspectives, folks on, folks on our committee. I also think that our mayor, that has been, you know, stewarding this process for the last few years that it's been in place, being a part of that discussion, will really help to make it a really thoughtful and thoughtful, thorough. And I think that we're going to have, we're going to be able to dig in well. So, thanks.
Ditto.
I guess I feel compelled to make additional comments, since this is something that is a, in statute with state and now the OMC, that this is, you know, the mayor's decision to seat, you know, who, that person, that mayor feels would be representative. And I feel like I've done a really good job in doing that. I know I have disagreement on the council regarding who I've picked. But I, I think it's kind of a slippery slope. If we get too much involved in Salary Commission, it's supposed to be independent for a reason. And a lot of the work that you're talking about feels like that should be done by the commission, independent of us. We, you know, Lina is not here, but I think that, you know, I don't know whether this rises to something that needs to come. I mean, I'm not the chair of the committee, but it just feels like, you know, I read this, and it feels kind of like we're already doing so much of this work in the city that it should be incorporated, yes, into, you know, looking at the wording of the, what we've got going on. But I, I feel like it's like we're trying to maybe put our thumbs on the scale in some way that I don't feel comfortable with. And...
Go ahead.
So I, I just want to be really conscious that this is supposed to be an independent group of mixed views. And I think it bears mentioning, which is very uncomfortable to bring up, but our community survey that we do every two years, the results of that, they came back where we got 70% of broad demographics that match our city's demographics, 70% say we're going in the wrong direction as a city. And I look at that as our report card. And I remember the youth, the climate youth that came into our chambers years ago and gave us a C minus on climate. And we all lost our minds, right? And we just jumped into action, and we just really, really put a lot of effort into our climate. And our community basically has given us an F. And for us to sit here and fixate on how much money we're making when I don't think our community supports us probably making any money. So I just want to be really careful about going out there and looking like we're trying to influence this process.
Councilmember Wen.
Yeah. I now too also want to be very careful about how we're looking like we're trying to influence this process. I appreciate that, your concern and what I believe the intent to be. And I can tell you, as from the time that we've been colleagues, and however much relationship and trust we've built, and I hope we've built some, that that is not my agenda. This is not an attack on how you have, how you have stewarded this process. It's just looking at it. And there, you know, there has been some thoughts that it could be different, absolutely. Otherwise, it wouldn't be before us today. But we're going to have this discussion. And I am genuine in that I really wanted to have it on this year's work plan for CLIPS so you can be a part of the discussion. I think it's important to have that. This is not, you know, it would be easy to say, oh, let's do it later, you know, when, when, you know, somebody else is, somebody else that might not have as much of an opinion and isn't as thoughtful about it as you would be on it. I want you to be a part of it. This is not about council making the big bucks. We get paid peanuts, okay? I mean, really, relative. It depends, it's relative. But I don't think any one of us up here, sitting up here because of the money. So...
That's the point.
There, yeah. So there's a part of me that, I understand the intent. I think that, you know, the impact could be really harmful if, yes, if we have our finger on the thumb too much. And also, there's always a way to improve processes and at least welcome the conversation. And it's just that I welcome the conversation. I don't think that we're ever done when it comes to, to trying to make a process more equitable. And I feel so good about it that I welcome the conversation, and it's just that.
Okay. I'm going to go to Councilmember Cooper, and then Councilmember Payne.
You have two thoughts, and I want to encourage us to not have the discussion that we might be referring to committee now. Because one of my thoughts is that I don't think this necessarily rises to the top of our list. And so while I appreciate the accommodation for the mayor to be part of the conversation, I'd like you to actually make, make that decision based on the work plan that's in front of you for the remainder of this year, and to consider whether it fits better into next year's work plan, knowing that our mayor lives a few blocks from City Hall and would be happy to come down and be part of the conversation.
I'd be happy to serve on any Salary Commission in the future, too.
He might be the former, the former council, right?
Unlikely now.
So, so, so that's, my real concern is time. And then I'll just say that if we give the thumbs up, which I hope we'll just do in a minute, to, to pass this referral on, that whoever the chair is, spend some time with the city attorney understanding that boundary prior to the Community Livability meeting. So that that, that conversation has the right boundary.
Thank you for that. Next, I have Councilmember, actually, Councilmember Parshli, followed by Councilmember Payne.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. That's sort of where I'm going. I, I just want to make sure that we don't rush, if we're going to do this, we don't rush it. And I'd rather see it in 2024. But I'm also encouraged by Councilmember Wen, or Chair Wen of CLIPS, comments that she wants to be thoughtful and does want to take into account the mayor's experience. And just, you know, to give her credit, she started this in 2017. And honoring some of her strong-held opinions that this really should be a separate process. And then just throw out to the, the CLIPS Committee that somebody made the comment, I'm not sure which one of you did, but you, you get credit. Maybe this is a task that we put on the Salary Commission, just to have a conversation about what would make this process, you know, a little more transparent for our community, a little more fair who gets seated, so that it is separate from us. And as long as we're getting adequate legal review, which I've been assured would be part of the process, I'm, I'm in general in favor of this.
All right. Councilmember Payne.
Where to start? Okay. So on the point of the amount of money we make, that is something that, this is not where this is coming from, where, why I have agreed to this, this referral. It is coming from a place of sort of questioning why we do certain processes, and nobody ever asks the questions of why we do it a certain way. Sure, the law prescribes certain ways to conduct an independent Salary Commission, but we also do things that aren't necessarily prescribed. And so this is about taking the equity approach that we have applied to nearly every other aspect of the work we do as a city, and we're also going to do it to this Salary Commission. And I believe that that is important, that we do that. I don't think that's pressing our thumb down on a scale and trying to influence the process in any way other than to state the fact that we say, hey, you do realize that to be elected to these positions is very inaccessible for a lot of people. And the salary frankly has to do with it. And so I think that it does deserve to be looked at. And that's why I agreed to the referral. It's not to sort of influence particular members or a process or that is prescribed by law in any way. It is simply to look at the informal practices that we have in place and making sure that we're applying equitable approaches to those informal practices.
I wouldn't call this an informal practice. And I kind of resent being told that I'm not being fair and equitable in my choices, but...
Councilmember Madron.
I don't think anybody said that.
Your referral did.
No, no, it didn't. But what I was going to say is that I've heard, one thing that I've heard from a couple of folks is like asking the Salary Commission to do some of this work. And I'm pretty sure that their scope is, is laid out in the RCW. Like, we can't ask, no?
It's in the code.
It says, yeah. The municipal code may say more. The RCW says very little. It says that we can establish a commission to set salaries.
Okay. That, that's one thing that I wanted to, to clarify, is like, what are we allowed to ask of them? And what are we not allowed to ask of them? And that's a conversation that we can, you know, have with the city manager and the city attorney in terms of what we can ask of them and what we, what we, what we can't. So I just want to be clear on that.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on. So I'll leave it up to the Chair of CLIPS to figure out when it's scheduled. All right. City Manager, do you have a report?
Just one item. I will be on vacation next week. So Debbie Sullivan will be the acting city manager and occupying the city manager's chair at next Tuesday's council meeting.
Excellent. All right. With no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.